We are now recording for the select the meeting, March 2.
Okay, I have 7:00 PM. Signing address, I have no idea. Okay, this is first selectmen Steven Everett and I am opening the regular Columbia, this regular meeting.
Yes.
First Tuesday, regular meeting on the Columbia Board of Selectmen Tuesday, March 2, 2021, 7:00 PM. As always, we'll go over the rules for conducting a virtual meeting. This is a web-based call, so we are operating under the following procedure, this session is being video and audio recorded. Board members and staff will generally remain on mute, except when speaking or voting and will generally be keeping video of themselves on throughout the meeting. If a member of the public creates an audio or video disruption, they may be manually ejected from the meeting upon recommendation of the staff or the first selectman. Public input needed to be in 24 hours in advance to public input at ColumbiaCT.org. And for public input during the meeting, your comments can be submitted through the chat in the Zoom meeting or wave your hand and request your mic to be unmuted. There will be an audience of citizen. I believe there is one, two of them, so. And then when you are called upon, whether it's your chat or your hand or audience of citizen, please give your name and address. In saying that, everybody, I would like to take a moment of silence and well, whatever you'd like to reflect on me personally, that everybody gets the vaccine and that it works. Thank you. I need an approval of the agenda. I've looked it over, talked to Mark, I'm making motion that we approve the agenda as presented. Any discussion? All those in favor, Bill? Yes. Judy?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Is Lisa on?
Yeah. I am.
Wonderful. Yes, and this is Steve and I vote yes, thank you. Let me see, I'm sorry, I'm gonna see if. Trying to see if this meeting up on my computer, but it's not, okay. Approval of the minutes from the Board of Selectmen minutes, special meeting on February 23, 2021.
I moved, I moved that we approved the minutes of February 23, 2021.
Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor, Bill?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
And Judy?
Yes.
And one abstention, thank you. Mark, son of a gun, it's not on here. Okay. Next is Audience of citizens, do we have anything?
Let me check the chat. Nothing in the chat. And really, it's, we just had two audience and then Sue Epstein at the moment, so.
Okay.
Neither of them raising their hand.
Full business. Question, answer, so we're gonna have people from the senior center, social services and other departments, Mark?
Yes, anything else we want to discuss?
Okay, why don't you start us off with who's here, please?
All right, why don't, why don't we start with Bernadette? To discuss the senior center elderly services, senior center budget and transportation. And Bernadette, if you want to just give us some kind of a highlight of some of your thoughts for your budget and if you want to include your capital requests for the generator, any thoughts on that, that'd be great.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. Bernadette Deering, Senior Services, Senior Center Director. Let's see here. Really not too many changes in our budget this year. There was no salary changes. For the telephone, I increased by $180. The bill is approximately $115 a month, noticing there was a slight increase, so adjusted that. For supplies, I just removed $200 for the AED. We just received the AED pads and they will not need to be changed until 22, 23 budget.
What's AED?
Those are the pads for when doing CPR.
Oh.
Yeah. Okay, and for fuel, I increased by 1,000 gallons for the senior center. I noticed that we were running short this year, which seems by, by guesstimating from what we use so far within six months. So, and that's with not too many people in there using hot water and such, so I thought it would increase by 1,000 gallons, just to be on the safe side. Now, which was an increase of $1,982. Let's see here. Then moving into our capital capital improvement plan. We are in, in need of some desks for both myself and Margaret. And hopefully, we're able to get them at the Yukon co-op, or not the co-op, but they also, they have free furniture for municipalities over at Yukon, they are used, but actually not too bad. They are currently closed due to the pandemic, but hopefully soon they'll reopen, we'll be able to get in there and if so, that 2,500 will become zero. The ice maker, I believe we were able to try, we found funding through the 36 account, which we have through the senior center. And if there was also leftover monies from, we had put in money to install handicap bathrooms, bathroom doors in our senior center, which is no longer able to do, so we're just rolling that money over for the ice maker. Also, Jason and I have been working together on the ice maker as well as the commercial oven for the senior center and that was put in place as well.
So that's all in this year's budget, Bernadette, so for next year?
For next year.
For what we're talking about, discuss the generator, please, and why that's important.
Well, you know, there's many pros and cons. I understand, you know, I, I think a lot of people are thinking, well, we do have the school. And for many of my seniors, they do feel very comfortable coming to the senior center for, they're not gonna have as much of a crowd. They're gonna be amongst people they already know. For the food in, in the refrigerator and freezer, we do currently, right now, we have the food pantry there. I'm not quite sure where that will move to or if it will stay, and if so, we will have food that will go bad if we do not have a generator to keep them running. Let's see. And for just for safety reasons, we'll be, we'll also be able to work at all times there at the senior center with having the generator.
And how about a heating cooling center, Bernadette?
Yes, well, that will definitely keep the heat on and the air going. We have in many years, in the, in the 11 years that I've been there, we've had four major storms where we were out for nine plus days. So the senior center was, not every time was a senior center out, but our residents were. And the senior center was a place to be, not only for our DPW guys coming in after their long long hours, but for residents to come in, find a cooling center, a place to get water, to charge their phones, to have a nice meal, there was many times that we provided hot meals for residents during a lengthy outage. So.
Is that $2,500 typical?
Thousand.
Twenty-five thousand.
Twenty-five thousand.
I didn't know that.
Yes, so Jason and I were looking at that, he, he did purchase one from Lebanon and it was around the 25 to 30 mark. So that would be sufficient for our building.
Yeah, I was looking at one for my house and it ran, was gonna run around 15,000 and this is bigger. So it, I, it looks like that would be the going price for these things.
I was just curious if you had gotten any quotes or, you know, the number was based on anything, so.
Yeah, it was, the number was based on what Jason had done in his past work.
Okay, thank you.
Judy, Judy, I think you need to shop around, I got one for my house for under a thousand dollars, it runs the whole thing, so.
Well, I, I decided not to get the whole house generator, I'm getting a, a good one, but it's not a whole house one.
Yeah, I know, I'm just sidebar, okay. Anybody else about the generator questions or her budget, is there anything else, Bernadette, before we, before we get into that?
In regards to the generator, no.
No, what you presented here.
No, I do have the Commission on Aging budget, if you wanted to review that as well, that includes my transportation.
Yep. So before we do that, any questions, anybody from what she's already presented?
My only suggestion is get another quote, to get a number of quotes for that, it probably is gonna run that for the generator, but just to make sure.
We will.
We'll get sealed bids, Judy.
Yeah, they're pricey.
It'll be bid out.
Yeah.
Okay, continue, please, Bernadette.
Okay, so our Commission on Aging budget, which includes our, includes our transportation. Let's see, we've added the car payment, which is $7,179 for the year. I increased the car gas for $1,000 and my, my reasoning for that would be anticipation of rides after everyone receiving their vaccines, really wanting to go somewhere and get out. So many of our seniors have been stuck inside for so long. And.
Am I looking at that, I'm sorry, am I looking at that somewhere?
No, it, it wasn't added to the we missed it in putting it in your binders.
Okay.
Okay. I decreased the supplies line as well for the AED pads. For the both vehicles, they have the AED. So that will again go back in, in the 22, 23 budget. We did put an increase for the dollar ride donation, a letter came in, the increase donation is $9,337. And we removed one cellphone from the telephone line, which decreased it by $660, we found that we did not need the second cellphone for the car, the car is already, it links to their personal cellphones and it are really the cellphone was for navigation, in the car comes equipped with navigation. So they are finding that they, they really don't need a cellphone other than their own personal ones, they prefer to use theirs.
Bernadette?
When using, yes.
If someone needs to be picked up early or something changes in a doctor's office, do they call the driver's personal cellphone center?
Absolutely not, they call the senior center and then we dispatch out to our drivers.
Oh, okay, so you use that as your central hub for call.
And that's worked out, okay.
It's working great, yes. Now with it, when we use our van, we have multiple people there, we do give out the van drivers through the Becker Senior Center's phone number, so the, the cellphone that was provided for the van, we do have that one. So they do call that when the van is in use.
Okay.
And that was about it, there really wasn't much change for Commission on Aging and Transportation budget.
Okay. All right, any questions? So we'll get a copy of that out to everybody, please, Mark.
Okay.
Yeah, okay. Thank you, Bernadette.
You're welcome. Did anyone have any questions in regards to how the senior center is running at the moment?
Is it running? You know, I know that I, I get reports and I know that everybody up there and you have you and Kate and volunteers and stuff helping to get the seniors their shots, their vaccines and, you know, I appreciate that, believe me, I, I was able to get my, schedule my own and I was canceled twice. And you think to yourself, honestly, if they're canceling, not that I'm anybody, but if they're canceling me, I realize that they're canceling a lot of people and it's very stressful, it's very difficult. And I was on with the Congressman Joe Courtney and he said, oh, you know, the Vams is working good and, you know, I'm like raising my hand, no, not so good. And it's not, it's just a mass undertaking, I, you know, it's something we've never done before. But so there are glitches, but I want people to know that we do appreciate the volunteers and the people that are working to try and get everybody their appointments to get their shot, so, thank you. Anything, what else is going on up there?
Well, I was just speaking with Rob Miller in regards to opening our senior center and what that would look like. He did stress some concerns, seeing that Columbia is still in a red zone, considered a red zone for the pandemic and if we were going to do anything, he suggests for food-wise to do curbside pickup.
Yep.
And which is something that I've discussed with Linda Reynolds, my site server. We'd like to get started on that sooner than later. Also, having our podiatrist come in every 10 weeks by appointment only, he said, anything that would by, by appointment, each sector has each rules. So they would have to abide by them, so like a hairstylist coming in would have to abide by the rules following any hair salon within the senior center, so those types of things. But as for having the center fully open, he highly does not recommend doing that at the moment. He's going to give me some more detailed information tomorrow when we, we meet. So this is something I, I would really like to do moving forward, I'd love to get my seniors back into the senior center, however, I want to make sure that I'm doing it safely. Right. And I'm following all the rules and guidelines provided by the CDC and the state, so.
Yeah, I met with the doctor today and he, he couldn't understand why the state is ready to take down some of the restrictions. He said, you know, three more months, four more months, we could have this thing really licked. So I, you know, okay, I know it's, it's tough on everybody, but let's be, let's be sure.
We've gone this far.
Right, so we, we have a lot of things that are already in place, our virtual fitness classes and bingo, which started up and then slowly failed. Many people do not have internet that are senior citizens, so, or know how to operate a, through a Zoom call, so they're learning, it's a learn process, but we're working on it and I think we're gonna do maybe some more curbside programs, doing an Easter meal coming up soon that'll be curbside and then it may be in May, having some more outdoor activities at Rec Park. So we can get everyone together, but properly social distance.
Yep.
So.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Next, Mark.
Next, we have Katie. Katie, can you bring us up to speed on social services and some of your thoughts about this year and next year, next year's budget?
Yeah, thank you for, for the opportunity and special thanks to Bernadette, Judy, Mark and Jen, who have been there since, since the beginning, since they started and you know, and on behalf of the residents that I've worked with so far, you know, really thank you to the board. You know, I think establishing this role, Community Social Services Coordinator for the town of Columbia has really proved to be the right choice for this community. And personally, I've appreciated the opportunity to use my 16-plus years of working as a municipal social service agent and working for a couple of different nonprofits to really add, add value and benefit this town that I love, so thank you for that. I'll walk you through, you know, what I've accomplished in these first five months. You know, what I've identified as what makes the most sense for next steps and really, you know, how I can help you make that happen. At this point, we can now say that the town of Columbia has a mission statement that's clear and a structure for social services that really, you know, promotes our value for the well-being of our residents, so that's been put into place alongside creating this, you know, I jumped right into handling some of the crisis situations that are inevitable in, in any town such as, you know, households running out of oil, where I've been successful for the year and in the long term. Assessments and referrals for resources really have been pretty fluid since I've started working and across a range of topics and, and ages, so families, adults, all seniors alike, being able to, you know, facilitate some of those resources out. And it's been anything from, you know, maybe the more serious, the more vulnerable population like elder protective services, make referrals there, to also things like pointing people in the right direction of where they can donate, where they can channel some of their, their energy of wanting to contribute, so it's been a range. I began short-term case management right off the bat with residents, which, you know, in some instances can be working through actionable steps, you know, where the client is, you know, taking over pretty shortly after conversations and then also more ongoing situations, so right now, you know, I, there's probably about five clients that I'm working with on an ongoing basis for more complex situations, so things like encouraging engagement in, you know, treatment programs, for example, or, you know, dealing with setting boundaries because of family dynamics, some of those more challenging issues that I know our fire department, you know, tends to respond to, so working on that on an ongoing basis. And I guess, you know, while setting kind of a foundation for, for the department and providing this one-on-one service to residents, I've also taken the opportunity to connect with leaders in our community, so during the pandemic, it's, it's been different because it's, you know, required, you know, initiating, reaching out to folks, less, less meetings, but I made sure I've, I've connected with folks to set up phone calls, have a conversation, hear perspectives from the people that work in the school, people who are part of different organizations, understand their perspective and also let them know how I can help them. And that's led to a couple of referrals as well, so that's, that's been a positive thing. Also developed connections with organizations that can serve Columbia. I do have a network, having worked in, in the space in Connecticut for a number of years, so I have utilized that. And some of it is just bringing it more present for folks, so things like Operation Fuel program that is free, there's no costs to Columbia, but they can help pay for fuel deliveries, help pay for system repairs, just making them more present so that our residents know about it. And I think, you know, established myself with, with some organizations as a person at the table. You know, Bernadette, you know, pointed me to Hunger Action Team and being able to participate in that has been mutually beneficial, I think, for, for me town of Columbia in the group, I've been able to help a couple of members of that group with resources I created around energy assistance and just general resources as well as, you know, being able to have another Columbia to say what we need, for example, we started a rent assistance program that is now available to Columbia residents as well. So that's, that's been great. I'm, I'm part of a, I joined the professional network group, Connecticut Local Administrators of Social Services. I think that's been really key to, to represent Columbia there and also to get synced into what 50-plus other towns in Connecticut are doing in terms of social services for the town, so it's a constant resource I have to understand what one town does when there's a house fire or what a social services within a town government does when there's a change to a program like SNAP benefits. And, you know, very timely, you know, what other towns are doing to support vaccine enrollment and, you know, I, I think Columbia, the senior center here and, and, you know, myself, we've, we've, we've done a lot to support our residents as, as much as possible. So that's been useful just to have a temperature and have a voice in, in that group. I completed a grant training through CEREC, you know, just to learn ways to best facilitate our substance abuse grant. And CEREC, you know, really narrows in also on the eastern region of Connecticut, so getting familiar with support services around substance abuse, unique to our community. Been able to utilize our, our website, which is great that it's been revamped even more. But going through the links that are present there, updating them, refining them, creating a, a resource list A to Z that folks can access 24/7. Someone from Andover reached out to me to say, can I just put this on our site, which was great, sure, of course. So that has been positive. Last thing I'll, I'll just mention is just responding to the, the current needs of, of COVID, so the vaccine rollout. I know the senior center and volunteers are working hard, calling people, personally, I've made like 200 calls to, to folks. You know, talked with the local health department too, to pre-register people, just like the senior center is doing. Put out some resources flyer-wise, collaborated with Bernadette to get her feedback on it, to make sure it was going to be well-understood, but putting together resources that shared with the library, you know, the churches in town, putting that out for, for people to have as a, as a resource. Where I'd like to go from there, I mean, it's, you know, contributing makes me excited to do more. The prevention grant, like I mentioned, we have that, you know, we have that secured, we have that money. It's, it's strictly focused on vaping prevention, so we are tied to that, so, you know, the, the question is do we do media, do we just do posts about it, do we just do education? Or can we do more, you know, can we tie substance abuse into the mental health of, of our children in our community? So there's potential there to, to do more with that prevention grant, to really utilize it to the fullest. Energy assistance, of course, we think wintertime energy assistance for oil, but in Connecticut, you know, energy is a year-round issue. You know, I'd like to see where I'm making sure, we're making sure that our residents have the best benefit and support for the different energy programs throughout the entire year. And what that means is, yes, folks can apply and get approved for energy assistance through access still and they are still doing that. However, they award grants to folks in allotments only, so it's critical to make sure that they're getting the full allotments that they can. Come springtime is, is the time when utility shut-offs can start and there may be households who are in that scenario more than ever before, but that typically can be an issue no matter what, once that protection is gone. And then getting folks onto payment plans, the utility companies do And then getting folks onto payment plans. The utility companies do take authorization for budget plans from social service providers. So that's something that I want to make sure we're getting our folks onto payment plans that they qualify for. And realizing that they have that opportunity. The food bank, I did a little bit of an outreach to participants receiving holiday baskets, some food banks, just with a flyer of my information. But I think, you know, what we could do more is target families a little more personally with that personal touch. So scaling up that outreach, I find that especially in a community like Columbia, there's still a stigma around food needs. I mean, yes, we can turn on the TV and see tons of people are in need of food, but there's still that stigma. So how do we engage people to, you know, connect with more benefits that are going to help them long-term? I think as the food bank or as the senior center reopens and even the massive planning for that and as programming ticks up for the senior center, even if it is outside, the food bank will need some kind of transition. You know, so that's something that I'd love to help with, help solve that problem so it can transition you know, other programming through the senior centers that can thrive. You know, I expect to do continued support around COVID-19 even as we transition out of the pandemic. You know, having worked in transition supports for a number of years, both with veterans and young adults. Transitioning to something positive is still a transition. So I do anticipate having to work around some of that and support the community that way. And, you know, enhance the partnerships. There's some wonderful groups in town and it's been, you know, a very positive experience to learn about, you know, what the Leos are doing and to hear that, you know, the leaders of that group are curious about things like the food bank and how that works. And I'd love to support and work further together. And there's opportunity here for more community engagement, you know, intergenerational work. Whether, you know, I did speaking to someone who helps run the community garden, you know, having an opportunity to have some space there for family and financial need. So there's lots of opportunities, I think, to just continue to support the community as it becomes safer and safer to interact in different ways. One concrete, probably easy to solve need that I would recommend that the town looks at is case management software. So, you know, I'm required to keep certain case notes, that's standard and, you know, it's smart to consider having that information securely stored. So a case management software system is typical. And that's something I would recommend, just ensure the integrity of the work that we're doing. And it can be a tool for just efficient tracking. So one kind of group study, just in the network I'm part of, of other social workers across Connecticut, landed on one that's $360 a year. Charity tracker, that's one I'd suggest. So that's something to consider and think about just as a way to make sure that data is kept securely and that data can be, you know, produced for just different tracking information that you might be interested in. And then, you know, I am excited to do more and I am energized to do that. And I feel, you know, I've been capable of doing this job and doing this work. Feel like I have any needs around training or, you know, support services or, you know, funding for a program. But I do need time, you know, that's probably the biggest resource that I need is time. And, you know, one thing we know is in this kind of work, it's not always planned and scheduled. You know, a house fire happens when it happens. Someone runs low on oil when that happens. And there aren't always quick fixes, but there are immediate needs. And some of the programs we interact with, you know, for heating systems, for example, someone calling an agency isn't necessarily going to give them a turnaround time to solve that problem. And unfortunately, it does at times require an advocate. It requires someone to follow up. It requires a professional calling another professional. You know, unfortunately, that's the nature. So in order to serve the town better, respond to those emergency needs and be able to provide better outcomes for those situations, I'd be looking to add one more day a week to my work schedule. Make it a three-day week. So that would be eight more hours is the one ask I do have.
So I want to ask you, how much of your time now is around the COVID and the pandemic and the needs there for the community?
Um, once, you know, in talking with Mark, I began working an extra eight hours to support the vaccination signup and scheduling. So I've been organized and just dedicating like a strict eight hours for those purposes. So my two days a week are still around the other areas. Of course, there's like a cause and effect of COVID that I think influences some of the daily work. Starting off the job, I was not sure, you know, what it was going to be like exactly. I thought that I might get more calls around, I lost my job because of COVID or, you know, more calls around that. Most of my case management work is like issues that people are just having in life, no matter what. Of course, the pandemic is a layer of stress. I don't think it enhances too many things. But what I have found is that life is still happening to people. You know, if someone has had challenges budgeting, they've had that before COVID. You know, so I think having worked as a social worker for the town of Glastonbury for nine years, it's, and having taken a little hiatus. Issues around like boundaries of families, these dynamics there. I wonder in terms of outreach, that might look different once the pandemic has subsided some. You know, where I can go to more meetings, I can go to the senior center, I can connect with more people. I see COVID changing my outreach in that way. And so, yeah, that's some feedback there.
Okay, so another question I had was, do you work, don't we get services for AHM? Social services?
My understanding is that they provide counseling for children and families. So Columbia does have access to that and they are still a resource.
And then are you working with the school? Because we have a social worker in the school or two of them, I believe, right? One or two of them?
Yeah, so I have had the opportunity to connect with AHM and that has been useful. So like a scenario that may happen in a school, you know, a teacher notices something or, you know, a family reaches out to a school social worker. And it seems like a lot of that is focused around the child, but it could be a scenario, let's say. Let's say there's a change in the family, you know, where maybe the school social worker or HM may be working with that child on processing, you know, a divorce or, you know, a medical issue. But that situation could also be affecting like the finances of a home. So that's where they would loop me in. So I would be doing case management for that household, for that family. So typically the parents. So that, does that make more sense?
I understand, sure. Just as long as you're working with them and you have an interaction with them and we're taking care of the needs of the people in the school and their families also. I'm trying to just get a grasp on who's working where and how we're working together and making sure. You know, it's funny because you're right, five months ago, we had an agency who was here one day a week. In theory, they didn't show up or weren't able to provide that one day a week. And now we're moving to, we need more and more three days a week. And I just, you know, I just need to understand it because when people ask about it, we have to be able to say, yep, great job this, and here's what she's doing and reach out to her if you need something. So hence my question. So, okay, thank you.
I appreciate your good work and I wanted to extend an invitation to you next Wednesday at 5:30 on the 10th. The youth services committee meets and we've had some presentations pre-COVID regarding vaping and they would be very interested in talking about the vaping grant as well as, you know, your resource, you know, for the town. So if you could make it, it'd be wonderful. We could send you a Zoom invitation.
Yes, please do. That would be great.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think as Katie kind of reaches out to the different commissions in town or committees or the fire department, that will generate more referrals and two days a week just isn't a lot of time to cover all those. You know, because Katie, I think you're going to be contacting the fire department?
Yeah, so we've had, I've had a dialogue with some of the members there and, you know, one thing I feel really good about is that they want to do the right thing and they want to help people and they want to make their time efficient. You know, but they're not necessarily always having trainings on social services and the programs out there. So, you know, I'm excited that there's a channel of how we can help each other. You know, and that's definitely a process. So, yeah, I know as Judy was saying that we're looking to get a date on the calendar just to talk. So ideally, if, you know, going out to calls, number of times, you know, that might be a time that you'd want to refer someone to me, to me, so I can just reach out and touch base with them. In terms of like having, you know, someone once a week, well, I, you know, I can't speak to that person. But in general, you know, you start to scratch the surface more and more. There can be more and more under, you know, the more you look, the more outreach, you know, the more you might see. In a, you know, example, just, and maybe other people have found this too, and just calling folks just strictly about the vaccine, you know, how's it going? Did you sign up? Do you need help? I mean, it's just call, like cold calling our residents. And even in that, you can just see that people who are doing okay, like actually do like to then talk, you know, and share and connect. And it's been an indicator to me that there is just that that need, even though people might be maintaining and doing okay.
And you've got some referrals from the state trooper also.
Yeah, and the school too has made referrals. You know, I think there's a chance to really support each other so that ideally, you know, folks are living up to their potential and knowing about all the different programs and support.
Yeah, and taking out the rental rebate will, you know, will generate more referrals and the food bank.
Yeah, renters rebate is a program I've done probably for like at least five years. So taking the applications, sending them into the state, very familiar with that, you know, and making sure people have the right documents is something I know it would be useful at. And it could be an opportunity of intervention, right? You know, that's an area where you're working with seniors or folks who are disabled, who are renting and seeing what their income is. So it's very easy to, you know, then gauge what else they could apply for and benefit from, you know, having my background. And, you know, I think there are some things that are coming out that are trying to help seniors, you know, get some of these benefits. So I think that would be a good opportunity to support the assessor's office, support our seniors and kind of, you know, see how else we can kind of wrap around. And I'll say too, I mean, like maybe we've all experienced this. Sometimes when you're trying to figure out your most immediate steps and that you're not, you don't have the luxury of seeing the big picture. You don't even know what else could be helpful to you. You're just trying to put out the fires that are in front of you. You know, so I think, you know, personally, just that's my mission in life is to, you know, support that big picture. So, yeah, it's exciting to think that we can really help people, you know, to the fullest.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we will, we will be talking about all your proposals and everything and thank you very much.
Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Mark, are we talking to any other department tonight?
Not officially. I just give you a heads up on something that just happened, which we put a claim in on, I already told you, Stephen, but there was a rash of burglaries in town stealing catalytic converters from trucks. They hit some of our dealerships, some of our commercial companies and they stole our converter off of our senior van. So that was a Bev, Bernadette, and I've been placing a claim with Kerma. And I've been working with DeCarli on getting an act, a a report so we could file that as well. But it's going to require a new procedure on where we keep the van when it comes back. We're going to have to put it, we're going to have to lock it up at the Public Works garage somewhere. So it doesn't happen again because it's about a $3,000 repair.
Kerma does the auto insurance as well?
Yes, they insure all our vehicles.
Good.
So Mark, do we have, do we have cameras at the entrance to the senior center?
No, all our cameras are inside the building. So we're going to have to put cameras outside the building now. We haven't, we haven't gotten that far, but it's something we should have.
Right, we put them up at Rec Park in the, whatever you call that thing, on top of the snack shack there. You know, so to get up there and dismantle them is very difficult. You'd be on the photo for 20 minutes. So I can't believe, we got to start thinking of these things, unfortunately, as the way things go. The senior center, certainly around Yeoman's Hall and stuff, certainly down DPW. You know, we have to start thinking and they're relatively inexpensive because it's a one-time big cost to put them in. And then they pay back dividends if people stay away or we catch people. So.
Good idea.
Love that. Okay. Okay, very good. So that's it for departments?
Yes, I think the other discussions revolve around wages. So that'll be an executive session.
Right.
And I believe that's it for the budget Beverly, unless I'm forgetting anything that we haven't talked about.
No, as far as I know, I think we're good, unless there's questions at capital.
We could address, we're not going to have an answer yet, but we told you that our CT chip collaborative has dissolved due to our largest member leaving. And we put it out to bid, it looks like by going out on our own, we'll be able to get better rates. So we will find that out tomorrow. And then before next Tuesday's meeting, we should have a better handle on where that increase will be. But right now, it looks like it will Right now, it looks like it will not be. The almost ninety thousand we had in the budget. For an increase to healthcare. So that should be coming down for both the Board of Eddie and the town.
That's good. That's good, okay. All right, so we move to six point two. Purchase of the property owned by Fanny Bell Robinson. So, uh, we approved. To move forward in the purchase of that, we signed papers, uh, to start that process. It went to five pack and they approved it, Mark?
Yes, sir.
So now we just wanna vote on actually.
Right, we we, because, um, we're still in COVID rules with executive order. We have to approve authorizing the purchase and then we have to approve the acquisition of the purchase. Through the executive order. Cause we can't have a town meeting still.
So I have to read six, one and six, six, two and six. What am I reading here?
Right, there's two resolutions, they're both different.
So I read them both?
Yes, we'll vote on both of them.
Okay, so the Board of Selectment Appropriation Resolution in lieu of a town meeting following the five pack authorization and PZC. Eight dash twenty-four report. Whereas the Board of Selectmen have previously recommended the appropriation of twenty-four thousand dollars from the undesignated fund balance. To be applied toward the purchase price of that certain piece or parcel of land consisting of approximately eleven. Point four, six acres of land located at Wellswood Road and Kenny Road. Shown as lot four on the Assessor's Map forty-three owned by Fanny Bell Robinson. The Robinson parcel is its name. And whereas in light of the current declaration of public health and civil preparedness emergencies in the state of Connecticut. And executive orders issued by Governor Lamont. In conjunction with such declaration, the holding of a town meeting would not be prudent. And whereas section seven of the Executive Order seven S, as in Sierra. Issued by Governor Lamont on April first, twenty twenty permits the Board of Selectmen in a financial planning and allocation committee. By the majority vote of each such body to authorize an appropriation in an amount less than one percent. Of the town's current total municipal budget without complying with the town charter. Or any statutory requirement to hold a town meeting or referendum to approve such appropriation. And whereas the Board of Selectmen, Financial Planning and Allocation Committee. Have each determined that the appropriation of the funds to be applied to the purchase is in the best interest of the town. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the town shall appropriate the sum of twenty-four thousand. Dollars from the town's undesigned fund balance to be applied toward the purchase price of the Robinson parcel. Any discussion? All those in favor? This is Steve and I vote yes. Bill?
Yes.
Lisa?
No.
Rob?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Thank you. And the Board of Selectment Resolution in lieu of a town meeting for acquisition, I have to read this one too, Mark?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Whereas the Board of Selectmen have previously recommended that the town purchase that certain piece to parcel of land consisting of approximately eleven point four, six acres. Of land located at Wellswood Road and Kenny Road, shown as lot four on the Assessor's Map forty-three owned by Fanny Bell Robinson. The Robinson parcel. And whereas the Planning and Zoning Commission has reviewed and approved the proposed acquisition. Under CGS eight dash twenty-four. At its February twenty-second, twenty twenty-one meeting and. Whereas the town charter would ordinarily require a special town meeting to purchase the subject property. And whereas in light of the current declaration of public health and civil preparedness emergencies in the state of Connecticut. And the executive orders issued by Governor Lamont in conjunction with such declaration, the holding of a town meeting would not be prudent. And whereas section four of the Executive Order seven JJ Juliet Juliet. Issued by Governor Lamont on May sixth, twenty twenty permits the Board of Selectmen. Upon finding that taking such action in a timely manner serves an important public interest or to avoid financial loss. To take action to acquire interest in real property without complying with the town charter or statutory requirement. To hold a town meeting or referendum to approve such acquisitions. And whereas the Board of Selectmen has determined that delaying the acquisition of Robinson partial would potentially adversely impact. The transaction. Now therefore be it resolved. That pursuant to the authority granted under section four of Governor Lamont's Executive Order seven JJ. That's Juliet Juliet. The Board of Selectmen does hereby authorize the purchase of the Robinson parcel for the sum of twenty-four thousand dollars. In accordance with the certain purchase and sale agreement dated February sixteen, twenty twenty-one. Between Fanny Bell Robinson and the Town of Columbia. Any discussion?
Hey, Steve, could you repeat that for me, please?
Loop it up, I'll take my teeth out. In favor. Judy?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Lisa?
No.
Bill?
Yes.
This is Steve and I vote yes. Now I have to transfer the funds, Mark? No, this is for the charter revision. Thank you, I'm sorry. All right, everybody, thank you. Six point three, discussion on the charter revision, transfer of funds. Mark came to us about, uh. I don't know, three weeks ago and said, you know, we're looking at all the levels. And we send everything to five pack for transfers and even when it's between the same line, same department but different Lima items. And we tried to raise the levels on some of them to make it a little bit smooth, a little bit easier. But also respecting the five pack to be kept in the loop. Well, five pack didn't exactly agree with that. So they said they'd like to keep it the same except for one transfer, which was maximum five hundred. They approved it to be, I think, a thousand dollars. So, Mark, take it from here.
Correct. So I just thought since there was such a wide range between Board of Selection's recommendation to charter review. And five packs recommendation charter review that I I just wanted to have Board of Selectmen weigh in. Uh, so charter review could. Do a better job of figuring out what's best for the town. So five pack in their meeting really. Likes to have all the transfers go through them. Uh, they feel it keeps them in the loop of all the financial transactions of the town. One aspect we were trying to do is. I tried to give maybe a little more. Authority to Beverly and I for the very small, easy transactions, but, you know, that's not a problem. Usually if we have a transaction that's urgent. I'll run it by Ernie and Steve and, you know, make sure they're on board because we might not have a month or a month and a half to wait. Uh, for an official transfer, or if it actually had to go to a town meeting, it could be even, uh, a little longer. Uh, so just understanding that there are occasions with this many approvals that we might have to act without. Uh, official. Voting, but, uh, it's been working as long as I've been here for five years. So. I don't have a problem. I just thought that this was a chance to take a stab at the charter. We might wanna up those limits. Uh, but five pack has voted no.
So you're saying if we wanna counter offer or accept what they want. It says here that they moved to recommend the raising the limit for the pi- five pack approval. From five hundred to a thousand and leaving all the other limits alone. Mark, honestly, I I don't really even care. I I mean, I get how they, I I get they're the financial planning and allocation. They should be kept abreast on everything. If they want the limits to remain the same. I I I'm okay with that.
I agree.
That's my two cents. Thank you. And that's my two cents and they're gonna have to approve that.
So I agree, you know, if they're the ones in the end who really have that. Authority and if that's what they want, I think we need to respect it.
Absolutely.
Yeah, thank you.
We'll bring it to chart, the charter revision, um, and tell them what, you know, what we decided.
Yeah, we're, we're just, can't we all just get along?
I know, I mean, it really actually doesn't, I don't think it's a big deal either way either.
Yeah, okay, so, uh, so, Mark, do we need a vote to say leave it? Or we we concur with five packs recommendation or you just let them know?
Just, just make that motion and I'll bring it forward officially.
I don't think you need to do a motion because we didn't do anything.
Okay.
You know, I mean, basically, we 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 concur. I I guess it appears that that we agree with Fight Pack. It's it's their responsibility and and they're elected to do the the financial aspect of the town, so. We we don't have any input as to their decision. That's fine. It should go forward to try to revision commission from there rather than having a. A motion from us. I don't see what difference it makes.
Except that we made a, did I, I I think we made a motion to. Maybe we did. I'm looking over the paperwork here. I recommend changes and every, we said, yeah, we sent it. All right, so we did not make any kind of motion, so that's fine. Yeah.
Correct, I didn't. It was just your thoughts.
Well, we'll re- review it at charter revision. And make sure they're aware of what has transpired.
Okay, so here's another one. Um, new business discussion on seven, section seven point five in the Charter regarding compensation for the members of the Board of Assessment Appeals. I guess. We, we compensate the members. Of Assessment of Appeals and we, they meet twice a year and we pay them for their time and nobody else. Is really compensated for meetings and except, I guess, the first selection. Tell me about it, Mark, I, you know, or Julie, I would come up, why do you do it? Why, you know, what's the, what's the concern?
Historically, it's in the Charter that they're compensated based on a rate determined by the Board of Selectmen. And they have always been compensated, but back in Beverly thinks in two thousand eight. They decided to just waive their compensation. But it has been recently requested based on uncovering from the existing Board of Assessment Appeals. Uh, that a compensation be returned. And. I I don't think it was a whole lot because they only meet a couple times a year and it's probably a minimum wage. So it's probably. A total of. Two hundred to four hundred dollars for the whole committee. Beverly might have more details on that, but it was, um, kind of like a. Just a payment for your costs of. To and from the meeting.
Yeah, I don't think they, at the charter revision, I don't think people knew why it started because it's the only commission that gets paid. So, um, I don't think people were clear. Um, so we were gonna, we were talking about whether to continue that. With, that's a charter revision. But it's kind of understanding why. I'm not clear. Somebody was. As as to why.
You don't compensate other, uh, force, I'm surprised.
Yeah, I know. I know.
I didn't understand it either.
And the only way to fix this, if if you feel, um, they're just like a five pack or or the selectmen. Or any other board commission is to recommend that they be removed from the charter. As a entity that gets paid.
So moved.
Beverly, do you know why this started? Why they got paid and none of the other commissions are paid?
I think the only way you would find out is if you go back in the minutes for the charter review. The last time somebody was paid was two thousand eight or nine. And from what little research, it might have been these people waived or it got forgotten. You know, they're paid basically thirteen thousand fifty cents and they're only paid for like three or four hours, but.
I I think it opens up a whole can of worms. I I really do.
And see if you can go back that far. It may not have been this recent charter revision, the one ten years, you may have to go back a little further. I don't know why it was chosen, but, um, I don't know if those members are still around. I'd have to look back on the three people that got paid.
I'm sorry, I agree with Bill, so, um.
I agree with Bill too.
So I make a motion, we remove the pay for, um. Chart, um, I'm sorry, members of Board of Assessment of Appeals.
I I don't think you can make the motion, Steve. I think it's up to the charter review commission.
Yeah, we have.
So we'll, so, uh, you know, we're all in agreement to send a recommendation to the Charter Revision Group that remove the pay for that. One committee?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
All right.
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree.
Makes sense to me, seems unnecessary.
Either that or you make a motion that everybody gets paid.
That could work.
Yeah.
That's the, that's the can of worms.
Yeah.
So, all right, so.
Yeah.
So it's in them, so it's in the minutes, that's what we're, uh, we're sending to the Charter Review.
Sounds good.
Nothing on the Columbia Lake, other than I think we're gonna have, well, I don't know, we should have, uh. You know what, Mark, it lets, I know there's nothing there, but it it's cold as the dickens today. How's the water level, just as a?
We're, we're keeping it at four feet, six inches. We do not want the ice to rise up and start crashing around the lake. So, um, that's been watching it real close.
All right.
Every, you, good guys do a good job with that. You always watch it close.
Yeah, they'll be at the door with pitchforks and torches if we let them happen.
I know.
Okay, Town Administrator's Report.
Um, just. Real briefly. The. COVID effort has been going very well. Uh, we pretty much tackled the sixty-five and older, uh, Bernadette and Katie. And some other volunteers have been really doing a great job. Now we're, we're helping anybody in the fifty-five or older. And I think what we're noticing, Bill already noticed that now we're giving recommendations that people go directly to the pharmacy. Portals. Through CVS or Walgreens, and I think that's gonna be the best way. Right now to get your shot unless you get into one of these big, big areas like over at Rentsworth Field. Or, um. Middlesex Health or Hartford Health. So, I I think when the, when the Johnson Johnson shot comes in, uh, we're gonna really ramp it up. We're still holding tight to appointment only, uh, in all our buildings just until we make more progress in in the shot. Area and all our employees are vaccinated. So that's coming along well. And. It's really, I've already told you about. Catalytic converter episode. And the, you know, we've been taking this time by by not using the buildings right now. We're, we're renovating the conference room. That was one challenge you gave me to, um, you know, it's seen, it was seen, it was really worn and torn. Uh, inside, so our our new, uh, facilities. Maintainer, uh, Dan Johnson's doing a fantastic job, so you'll be pleasantly surprised when you come back.
Maybe a lot older when we come back, we'll be surprised.
I wonder if it'll ever go back.
We will.
It's been a year.
Uh, you have a copy of the town monthly letter. We have budget and transfers. Yeah. Well, we have some.
Refunds.
No transfers?
No transfers.
So refunds in the amount of three thousand one hundred. So I make a motion. We refund, uh, in the amount of three thousand one hundred thirty-seven dollars and seventy-nine cents. Respective of what is listed here. Again, overpayment of some taxes, I guess, huh? Yeah. Hold it. Oh, uh, any discussion?
Nope.
All those in favor, Lisa?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
I vote yes. I vote yes. And bills, I make a motion, we approve bills, paying the bills in the amount of thirty-nine thousand five hundred and seventy-four dollars and fourteen cents consisting of twenty twenty-one emergency regular credit card and paycheck. Let's see.
So I had a question on the electric bill at town hall because it was fifteen hundred and change. In January it was thirteen, back in September it was only in the four hundreds. Do we use a lot of electric space heaters?
No, what's, the whole town hall side, the Yeoman's Hall side has a furnace, the town hall sides all electric. So what we wanna do, part of our HVAC conversion that we're going to start as soon as we put out the bid is to put heating cooling splits that'll be a lot more efficient than direct baseboard electric heat. So you're, you're seeing that cold snap and just trying to keep the offices warm.
And then on that note, I know everybody's trying to get their feet underneath them, but one day seeing how all those solar panels work would might be nice. Cause we've never really gotten a report on that.
I, we, we have the software and I'll get that back to you, I've asked Jason uh, to put together, he's, he's playing around with the different um, what you can see and how you can track it and we'll get that to you, Lisa.
Alright, just curious.
And I have it from the school, I'll get it to you from the town too.
Thanks so much.
Welcome.
Any other questions? All those in favor, Rob?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
This is Steve and I vote yes, and Judy?
Yes.
Wonderful. Um, let's see, audience of citizens, let me, let me there. Audience of citizens, anybody? Anybody, see anybody, Mark?
Uh, hold on, I'm looking. Um. No, everything um, Anne Donick just wanted to know who's gonna train us on how to use AEDs and I, I've told Anne that um, I'm reach, I've reached out to the Columbia Volunteer Fire Department to see if they can provide the training for, we did it about three years ago, we, we're two, two to three years ago, we need to do it again, so we'll bring in a trainer.
Okay. Alright, um, very good, board member comments? Great, so at this time I'm gonna suspend the Board of Selectmen meeting and then uh, make and move into executive session.
And that'll be at eight twelve and um, I see Katie's still on here, she has a right, since we're gonna be discussing her, if, does she wanna come into executive session?
Sure, I'll, I'll listen in and.
Okay. And who else, we will invite Beverly in, myself in, and Jen can depart and Anne will depart in the chronicle.
Bye.
So.
No, alright.
Night, everyone. So Katie's staying, let me just check the participants, right now I have Katie, Steve, Lisa, Judy, Bill, Rob, Beverly and myself, okay, we're good. And let me turn off the recorder. Alright, your camera's on if you wanna remake that motion as to what time it is, Stephen. It's uh, eight forty?
Yep, eight forty, and uh, we resumed the uh, Board of Selectmen meeting. In saying that, I move that we adjourn, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yes.
Now, Mark, I must tell you that next Tuesday I will be at the meeting, I'm flying in, I'm going to see my grandchildren for the first time.
Okay, so, so Stephen, what you and I'll do is um, we'll go over the budget with all these numbers as they are, we'll have the Board of Ed before you leave. And um, you can give me your thoughts, but we're gonna have to have a Board of Selectmen meeting unless you wanna change tonight, because we owe it to Five Pack sometime in that, that, we, we really owe it to them the next day.
Right, that's, okay, first of all, when do we owe it to Five Pack, March fifteenth?
By charter, they have to have by March fifteenth, so usually we try to get it to them the week bef- and before the Five Pack meeting, which is on the seventeenth. So um, this needs to be, the capital plan also has to be finalized also. And the operating needs to be voted on, so we can get that to Five Pack, we'll say by Thursday or Friday next week.
Next week.
Yes.
So next Tuesday is the ninth, you can't make that, Stephen.
I'm on the plane.
The tenth we lose, no, actually Bill will be done with Youth Services before seven on Wednesday. And Monday, is the Board of Ed finalizing their budget Monday, Beth?
Yes, they have their meeting, I, I think it's at seven on Monday.
Can everybody do, can everybody do Wednesday?
Yes.
Yes.
Judy, when's the next charter revision?
Oh gosh, next Thursday?
Okay, I can't remember.
Isn't it next Thursday?
No, it's the first Tuesday and the last Thursday of March.
Okay.
No, it's the second Tuesday.
It is the second Tuesday.
So it's next Tuesday.
Alright, so we can do Wednesday, yeah.
Yeah, Wednesday would actually be better for everyone.
Yeah, I think, I thank you all for being uh, flexible, I really would like to be at that meeting. We, we owe it to them to put forth the best, cleanest, most agreed upon budget and there's some things to look at, so, and we can only do that when we have the numbers, so I appreciate you all. Okay, thank you very much, so Mark, we'll make that change, please?
Yes, I'll set it up for a special meeting for the tenth and Charter Review will be the ninth and Youth, Youth Services will be the tenth before the Board of Selectmen.
Okay, and my password won't take in my computer, I'm only getting emails from January nineteenth.
So, okay, we'll, we'll work on that tomorrow.
Yeah, alright. Very good, everybody have a good evening, thank you very much.
Thanks, Beth.
Yeah, good night.